Good evening and welcome to the Oxford Board of Selectmen's meeting, October 18th, 2022. Just like to read this into the record in accordance with Mass General Law 30A. Section 20, I am advising all those in attendance this evening that the meeting is being recorded by the Town of Oxford. In addition to the Town of Oxford, Robert King of Coburgav is recording the meeting as well. We'd like to start off our meeting like we do every other meeting by reciting the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing we'd like to do on the agenda is approve the minutes dated October 5th, 2022. I'm looking for a motion to approve those minutes.
I make that motion.
Looking for a second?
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. I'll call for the vote. Dennis?
Abstain.
Robert?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, let the record show three affirmative, one absent, and one abstain. All right, we're fortunate tonight to have a couple of presentations to a couple Eagle Scouts in town. One is Todd Soder Jr. and the other one is Samuel Zostan. I hope I said that right. I'm going to read each citation honoring these two boys. And here's the first one. Samuel Zostan has been proven, has proven himself to be an outstanding member of the Boy Scouts of America and has achieved the highest rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas Sam's leadership ability moved him through the ranks of this troop where he spent two years as senior patrol leader, teaching and practicing survival skills including building a fire, being safe in the woods, and learning to cook. Sam has, Sam put his problem solving and critical thinking skills to work planning excursions for Troop 147. And whereas, his commitment to scouting is evidenced by his accumulation of a record 82 merit badges as a scout of Troop 147. Whereas Sam participated in various scouting adventures, including summer camps to Seabase High Adventure in the Florida Keys, Belcher Summit in West Virginia, and Philmont in New Mexico, where he camped on an island, snorkelled fish, tube down a river, and ziplined. And whereas, it takes years of dedication and commitment to achieve Eagle Rank. And whereas the citizens of Oxford appreciate Sam's hard work in completing his Eagle Scout project of creating four little libraries for the enjoyment of all the town of Oxford. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the Selectmen of the Town of Oxford and the Town Manager join Sam's family and friends in congratulating him for his accomplishment and wish him continued success in all his future endeavors. So congratulations, Sam. You are a good representative of the youth of Oxford and we are very proud of you as a Board of Selectmen and Town Manager. So if you want to come up, we'd like to present this to you and we can take a photo. Thank you very much. Mona, your parents with you? Are your parents here? Do you want to get in the picture, sir?
No.
Congratulations. Thank you. All right, we're fortunate to have a second certification. I'd like to read this into the record as well. Whereas Todd Soder Jr. has proven himself to be outstanding member of the Boy Scouts of America and has achieved the highest rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas it takes years of dedication and commitment to achieve Eagle Rank, and Todd has demonstrated enthusiasm in his commitment to completing the goals required to achieve Eagle Scout, including earning eight merit badges in one week. And whereas the Eagle Scout Award is a distinction that will follow him throughout life and inspire others to be role models in their communities. And whereas Todd sense of wonder and love of adventure propelled him to participate in scouting opportunities, including an extended stay at Treasure Valley, camping on an island and catching shark in Florida, visiting West Virginia, trekking through the mountains of New Mexico. And whereas the Eagle Scout project Todd completed was the creation of a reflecting garden area at the first congregational church on Main Street in Oxford, Mass. And whereas the creation of the reflecting garden area will help bring peace to the hearts and minds of those who enjoy it. And therefore be it resolved that we, the Board of Selectmen, Town of Oxford, Mass, and Town Manager join Todd's family and friends in congratulating him for his accomplishments and wish him continued success in his future endeavors. So congratulations, Todd. You two have made the town very proud and thank you for all your efforts. If you want to come up and get this? Nope, sorry, Jim.
It's okay. I appreciate it. I hear you guys. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Just also want to thank, I think we need to recognize the parents of these two young men and also the scout leaders and the people that dedicate their time and put a lot of time and effort in working with these young people. I know they, I know Ron has been working very hard on a little project that we have going on on Sutton Avenue and I know the Boy Scouts have been very instrumental in helping us with that project. And I know they'll be showing up another day to put some more plants in the ground. So I want to thank the scouts and the parents and the leaders for doing a good thing for the Town of Oxford. All right, next. We have a couple of appointments. Rose Wing and Melissa Moldover would like to be appointed to the Cultural Council. So at this time, I'm looking for a motion to appoint Rose Wing and Melissa Moldover to the Oxford Culture Council for a term of three years expiring in June 30th, 2025. So I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. We'll call, any discussion? I'll call for the vote. Dennis?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, let the record show four in the affirmative, one absent. We'd like to thank Rose and Melissa for volunteering their time and service to the town. Welcome aboard. All right, we have an application for a one-day special pouring license by Oxford Farms Sacred Cow LLC. Teresa Cohen of Sacred Cow LLC, doing business at Oxford Farms, is hosting a craft fair where she has invited Redemption Rock Brewery to attend. She has applied for a one-day special pouring license to allow for the sale of beer during the event. So I'm looking for a motion to grant this license to Oxford Farms. The event will take place at 103 Federal Hill Road on October 29th, 2022, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. Looking for a motion to grant this license.
I will make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Let's call for the vote. Dennis?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, let the record show four in the affirmative, one absent. We'd like to thank Rose and Melissa for volunteering their time and service to the town. Welcome aboard. All right, we have an application for a one-day special pouring license by Oxford Farms Sacred Cow LLC. Teresa Cohen of Sacred Cow LLC, doing business at Oxford Farms, is hosting a craft fair where she has invited Redemption Rock Brewery to attend. She has applied for a one-day special pouring license to allow for the sale of beer during the event. So I'm looking for a motion to grant this license to Oxford Farms. The event will take place at 103 Federal Hill Road on October 29th, 2022, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. Looking for a motion to grant this license.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, could you include the rain date in your motion?
Oh, I didn't see that. Thank you. I'm adding to this a rain date of October 30th, 2022. Thanks.
I'll amend the motion to include that.
Robert, you okay with the second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and I have a second. Let's call for the vote. Dennis?
Yes.
Yes.
Tim, I vote yes as well, let the record show four in the affirmative. Special pouring license has been granted. Next thing, we have some surplus equipment, I guess. So I'm going to read the list of surplus request, I'm going to issue, I'm going to read your list, okay, of stuff that's going to be on surplus requests. We have a 2002 Ford F-550. We have a 2002 International 2554. We have a 2012 Ford F-350. We have a 2008 Ford CRVIC. We have a 2007 Ford F-350. We have a 1994 John Deere 48. And we have a 2010 Toro tractor, a mower, and we have another 2010 self-propelled mower. So the list of items are what's going to be declared as surplus. And I am looking for a motion to determine that these items are in fact surplus and the town no longer needs them.
I'll make the motion that these items are surplus.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Robert.
Mr. Chairman, I found out from the DPW director that these items, if we approve this, will be listed on auctionsinternational.com for any residents of the town who might be interested in possibly fixing up an old DPW vehicle, if that's even possible.
Okay. All right, thank you, Robert. I will call for the vote.
Yes.
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 I'll vote yes, let the record show four in the affirmative, one absent. Motion passes. All right, we, the next thing on the agenda is Auto Ranch, Craig Latino, no longer needs his Class II license. So he's closing his business to health reasons. We hope Mr. Latino is okay. But I am looking for a motion to void that license.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 I'll vote yes, let the record show four in the affirmative, one absent. License, Class II license is voided. Next thing on the agenda, we need to sign the town election warrant. It's requested by our town clerk, Michelle Jenkins. Looking for a motion to approve and sign the town election warrant.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion? Call for the vote. Dennis?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll vote yes, let the record show four in the affirmative, one absent. All right, moving right along, we are looking for Town Manager's report. Jen?
Sure.
Laura Jaws?
Sure.
Haven't heard from you in a while.
Yeah, just since last, last week for town meeting. Starting out the manager's report, I just wanted to commend all the department heads once again for having another successful town meeting. This time it was held at the middle school, which was unusual. We did have a little bit of a delay getting a quorum, but once again, the voters for the town did come and made sure we had that quorum and that was held on September 5th. We did have 108 voters that attended and participated and I'm pleased that all of the 13 articles that were sponsored by department heads, boards, and committees did pass with unanimous votes. And I believe this is a testament to all the preparation, information, and communication that's rendered about each article, both in advance and at the actual town meeting. The next item on the manager's report is to update you on this website development that is a shared administrative priority and management priority. And as you are aware, in September, I had mentioned to the board that we were looking to potentially seek out a variety of different grants. One of them was a grant for a community compact competitive grant and it related to information technology best practices. We applied for this before we even put in motion our warrant article and I'm really pleased to announce that we have received a $38,000 grant to assist us with updating the website. Otherwise, we would have needed to ask for even more funding at town meeting, which there was a generous appropriation that will help us look at hopefully adding some new features that will be very customer-friendly and interactive with the public. Having said that, I wanted to just alert the board that I'm hoping, since this is a shared administrative and management goal and policy goal, I was hoping that at the next board meeting that we could vote to potentially add at least one member. I know Selectman Moriarty has expressed this as a, as a priority on a number of occasions and so has Selectman Frick. And perhaps one or both might be able to participate as community representatives in an ad hoc committee that we're going to form going forward, once we decide if we're going to continue with Civics Plus, who has done a lot of the initial website work that we have in existence for the redesign and upgrade effort. So please consider that. It'll be up in an upcoming agenda and we welcome that kind of input, along with the consultants that we'll hire to help us with this. The next item is just to let the board know, even though at town meeting I made this announcement, this is really important and we're already getting flooded with calls about electricity rates. So last May, I just wanted to remind the board that I had worked with our energy consultants, Good Energy, to go out to the market early in advance of National Grid, making their announcements for winter electric rates that was going to be announced in the fall. And on behalf of the town at that time, I wound up locking into a new two-year rate that's going to go from 2022 to 2024 for both basic and green energy supply, hoping that we would have more favorable rates than they were predicting because of the global instability, the war in Ukraine, and potential inflation in the energy markets. National Grid recently announced, actually during the week, the last week when we had our town meeting, that their rates are going to more than double, more than double, folks. It's going to be almost 34 cents per kilowatt. We have been paying for the last three years because of the aggregation program, about 10 cents per kilowatt. The rates that we locked in in May are actually 15 and a half cents per kilowatt for a basic rate and the green energy alternative for some people who opt for that is 18.4 cents. That's a far cry from 34 cents per kilowatt. And so I just wanted to, to alert the public that they're going to be getting actual letters that look something to that effect, that actually is going to allow them to compare the rates along with National Grid. If someone is already in the aggregation program, they're not going to have to do anything. If somebody wants to opt to into, they're going to have to sign up. And if somebody wants to opt out of it because they've gone solar or something like that, they just have to alert them. So we don't handle any of this in-house, other than to refer the public to the site, which is up there, oxford-cea.com. And there is also on this sheet that is going out to every household, a, an actual telephone number, which is 888-683-3518. So this is going to be very important for people, so I don't want people to be caught off guard if they're not paying attention to their supply rates on their bill. It does mean that their supplier is changing from Nectar to Direct Energy, which was the only vendor after we had put out, there was so much instability in the market that many companies that typically will offer very favorable competition for market rates were backing off from committing to more than six months. And we were lucky to lock in for a two-year rate and they are predicting that this winter rate is not just going to be this winter, it will go into next winter. So I hope the next time Good Energy comes, I did not bring some of the savings that have already taken place for all residents and businesses. And of course, the town is part of this aggregation program too. So more details will come with time, but I did want to let the public.
I just have a question, because somebody's asked me, if they're already in the program, do they have to re-sign or are they going to be automatically transferred into? I know you mentioned it, but it's an important point because several people have called me and asked me that.
I always say to people, if they really have questions, they should always direct their questions to Good Energy. But from what I understand, typically if you're already in, it will actually transfer over because they're already enlisted in the aggregation program. Should there be some kind of interruption or change, or they changed their account, that might mean they slip off. So they should always check and look, particularly as they go into the month of December, going in further for January 1st. Just look on the backside of your electric bill and it should say, and on the front of it, should say, after it, you know, looks like a regular National Grid bill, but under supplier, it should have changed from Nectar to Direct Energy.
And if they've got any questions, they call that.
Yep, sure.
Just call that.
And the price of the kilowatt on the backside, typically you'll see it. And if it's not coming up with the 15 and a half cents, which is the basic rate, you know, or 10 cents, but jumps to 34 cents, you have to make the call right away.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
No problem. Early voting is the next thing. I just wanted to, once again, alert the public that starting this coming Saturday, the town's clerk's office will begin early voting and that will be at the Senior Center. And of course, this is for the November 8th state election and the early voting starts on that Saturday. It goes from about 10:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon. And there are a whole series of other dates. I know in the next slide that actually has that. As you can see, it goes all the way up to November 4th and most of the time it mirrors what we're having for office hours, but there are a few that go into like a Wednesday from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. So if somebody really is afraid they might not be able to be here to vote, they can do that. Also, all the mail-in ballots have arrived last week and our clerk's office have already mailed out over 1,663 requested ballots. So I'm just alerting residents, be looking in your mailboxes for your ballots that you requested. So once you complete them, you can either mail them back or if you really want to make sure they get, right here at the town hall, we have this new secure ballot box that is monitored 24/7 and they can drop those in the new ballot box to make it easier for them as well. The fifth item on my manager's report is trick or treat, everybody. I just wanted to make the board aware that the manager's office is trying to help the board also in getting the word out about trick or treat. I did have my first call today, just want you to know, resident, wanted me to see if we could change it. I haven't gotten back to them. It was late in the afternoon that I listened to the message. But it is an official date that the board sets for October 31st, 2022, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. I only wanted you to know that we are putting it on our website, social media, it's out on the electronic board, which is probably why I got the call today. And it was also on our social media. And everyone, especially our motor vehicle drivers and passers-throughs that are coming through, please be traveling safe that evening while children and families are out. And for those people who aren't aware, the board in the past had voted at one point in time to change the date and it was not a pretty thing that, that, that actually transpired. So I'm just alerting the board, you should go back and maybe look at those minutes, but it was all over, all over the country and it brought a lot of attention that the board at that time was not looking to have done, all over trick or treating. So it is going to be October 30th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The sixth item is just to make the board aware that I can't believe it's almost November and pretty soon our Veterans Appreciation Luncheon will be here. And that is slated for November 9th, Wednesday, at the Oxford Senior Center. Because it's become so popular, the actual seedings are two, one at 11 o'clock in the morning and one at 1:30. And the attending veterans of this year, our Veteran Service Agent has been working very, very, I think tirelessly with our senior director. And even though we had it at Carbuncle Beach House on the previous two occasions, they wanted to put it here at the Senior Center once again where it used to be. We have a number of seniors that want to offer their services to volunteer, to serve the seniors, the veterans and their guests. Every attending veteran is also allowed to have a guest. And I said that Dave has been working, Dave Adams, who's our Veteran Service Officer, has been working very hard. Just to let people know, this year, we always give the veterans some kind of special gift and acknowledgement from the town, but each veteran that is going to be attending, from what I understand, is going to be getting one of these beautiful books. And it's a book that Dave has been able to acquire through his efforts and connections related to the, the granddaughter for General Patton, who actually has a foundation that helped put this book together. And it's really beautiful and it has a lot of beautiful stories in it. And I just wanted people to be aware that we, we do take this, this event very seriously. We take veterans' issues in this town very seriously. And I know the board, the administration, all of us want to do right when we are giving acknowledgement and tribute. So this will be in advance of our Veterans Day observances and we already have 90 attendees registered this far in advance. So obviously, board members that can attend, please let Dee know and Dave Adams know and we'll make sure to, to have you there as well. The next item is Community Center Forum. I saw a lot of those. Oh, I don't know what's happening here. I think they're out of order. That's what's happening. So I know two members of the board attended and I think a third might have watched it. I don't know if they watched it on TV or not, but I think so. But I wanted to give the entire board and community a little bit of background. We did have, prior to town meeting on September 28th, we had, in the Oxford Community Center Gymnasium, we had a well-attended and informative session or forum that included our staff, some members who are here, consultants from Berry &amp; Dunn, which are the consultants we hired to do a feasibility study about the community center. And the whole point of that was to provide some progress about what has transpired to date with some conceptual visioning. And the facility concepts that have been provided about what the current conditions are in the building, the types of programming, the spatial needs, coupled with future desired into generational programming. The whole point of the forum was to give people a bit of a background on how we arrived here. So one of the first things that we looked at was the fact that we had commissioned some money that was going to be used for a feasibility study, as well as we have a master plan that actually highlighted the community center and the DPW headquarters. That's two areas where we needed real improvements in the facilities. And, you know, people who may not be very familiar with the community center, it has become a really vibrant component of municipal government services and programs. And what I mean by that is, you know, it was a building that goes back almost 74 years in age, 1948. And in 2004 was the last time it was used as a school. And even though we have school administration on the top floor, there was improvements that were made to the very top floor and only that floor. So when you go by, the rest of the building on the other, the first floor and the basement are all from like 1948 with very little real infrastructure improvements. And so we contracted with Berry &amp; Dunn after we got the money to go forward with an actual feasibility study. So thanks to the efforts of people like our DPW and Facilities Director here, Jared Duval and Shelley Lambert for the OCC in terms of programming, you can see that since we've actually added capacity in for staffing, they offer 21 groups for fitness, they offer youth social craft and activity development, they do preschool age craft story and movement programs, they do all kinds of drop in the gym, basketball, pickleball, they've done some floor hockey in the past, they also look at and host and organize all of the gymnasium and beach house rentals, they do a lot of events specifically for age, different age groups. So you can see all the different functions that they do hold as part of their overall objectives in running programs. But they also have taken on a lot of the sociocultural programs that are offered seasonally and also on the common, from everything from teddy bear picnics and Movies on Main and upcoming Scarecrows Festival, which is in the final part of the report, to all of these real athletic events and also a whole summer operation of the beachfront and splash pad. And I say this is kind of important because not every community has it, a community center. And when you look at the building, and I hope some people had an opportunity to see it as they walked in, you can see that it has a very old antiquated HVAC system. We did have to put in a very expensive emergency boiler a couple of years ago. And again, it was because we were, you know, we were caught in between whether we want to renovate or whether we want to actually look at how we can get as much life out of the building before we can make a decision about what to do. But nevertheless, you needed heat in the building and we had to, I think Jared, if I remember correctly, that was something like six hundred and eighty thousand or something like that, I thought it was, that much. Yeah, okay. That was before you, I think it was Sean, sorry. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. But anyway, you can see there are major problems with space that is unusable and space that's just not appropriate, especially for children, that would need a lot of renovations and concerns about safety in the building. So we only use the areas that are usable, and the rest of it is just in need of renovations, whether it's the bathroom, whether it's some of the infrastructure, windows, all of that. So out of all of the research that was done by the consulting firm, the big thing, the three takeaways from everybody was that instead of building new someplace and demolishing the building, which makes no sense because the town put over a million dollars in the third floor, this was before my time, I would have told them to renovate the whole building at that time, but, you know, money was tight and they did, at least for the school administration, which, you know, on the top, that's one of the views of that third floor. And it's quite lovely and it functions really well. I know Justin Ledoux had every day gone there, and I think he would say that it's a pretty nice, nice place. We'd like the rest of the building to look like that. So one of the key things was, we're not going to build new, but we would keep the community center on its current site and renovate or reconstruct the building. That's the first concept that is coming out of all of the deliberation and the research that has been done. The second one was to create an intergenerational community center. There was a lot of dialogue with our senior council on aging resources. And we had been able to glean that there was indeed a lot of interest from our seniors in town that would love to have a greater ability to interact within the community center fabric. And I think the third one was, we should be flexible with whatever kind of design or reconstruction or concepts we put forward to the community, that there should be flexibility for potential expanded programming. And we're seeing that now as we build capacity in with the staff. And then the final couple of things, I'm just going to go through quickly because I'm not the consultants, but I did want to provide. If you look at the site plan diagram that they put, you can see where our pre-existing kind of our basketball courts are behind. And you know, if you go behind the actual existing community center, you'll see the big gym that's there from nineteen forty-eight. That's the area that they would probably more than likely want to have the community to think about, perhaps putting an addition on. The blue section up there that you see is the existing building, and they would add on square footage in that area. This is going to be very hard, the next two slides for people to see. But basically, there's a first-floor diagram concept that they put there that looks at potentially having areas for our senior center, including a large place for events and their meals that they have and many other programs that they would host, along with some fitness areas, along with some actual office areas. And that would be looking at trying to get as much as they can on the first floor for it to be very welcoming and to have sort of that ability to host more than one type of program or activity or department. The second-floor diagram is looking more for that whole sports or athletic areas, along with more fitness studios and actual places to host meetings and the like. Now, looking at it from a, you know, a blueprint concept, which is not really a blueprint, but to scale, you can't really tell what they were thinking, right? But the next slides will tell you, when you look at it, this is what they're thinking. If you know what the existing building looks like, it's over here to the left, that addition that they would want to put on and would recommend at this point in time, while they're still gathering information, this was a concept, this was a vision based on all of the people they spoke with about what they'd like to do. The next one is another sort of view of it, looking from the basketball courts in the backside of the cemetery or where the old red school annex building was, because it's been taken down, thanks to Jared at this moment. You'll see that that's a view looking towards Main Street, which looks very different than the old gymnasium that we have now. And then this is another view more towards the, I call it almost like the alcove that is behind three fifty-one Main Street, which is the old, old school building. This would be a courtyard and more of the senior area that could drive up, drop off, and go right into the functional area that could be for our seniors. And then, of course, the rest of the building there. And this is just showing you, the whole idea was to create, instead of a closed-in area right now, when you come into the community center, you're met with these old stairs and no ability to have anybody know whether someone is really in the building or not, except that they get put on our camera system. There's no welcome, there's no functional space. What they tried to sort of get us to think about, and none of us really knew what they were going to put together, was to think about this openness and the ability to feel like you can have both events in the outside area as well as the upside area. So I think the next couple ones do a little bit more interior concepting, so you can see what it would look like. I don't know if that would be our furniture or our clothes, but I would tell you, or we all look like that, but that's just a rendering. And so that would be sort of like a lobby, and this would be the interior first floor where one of this larger function areas, like I said, looking out, a lot of the, you know, seniors that were sort of asked for input, loved this kind of exterior garden and patio where they might be able to host events and also interior for a facility concept. And of course, the last upper slide is looking at the upper floor that they rendered, showing, again, this whole glass and lots of light, lots of solar passive light. And then also inside a very large area that you could have multiple sports. Just to give you an idea, how many kids, they have over two hundred, I think last year, over two hundred and fifty kids that were signed up for the basketball league, two hundred and fifty kids. So when we struggle to have, you know, that as a seasonal opportunity for them in the wintertime, it's because it's very popular. So that is what I just wanted to provide. So where are we at now? This is not any done deal. This is the very beginning. It's the beginning of a lot of months of work of providing them with everything from original blueprints to looking and examining the actual structure and then talking with people. And what the next steps would be after all of this is they're going to actually give us a report. The point of the forum was to show everybody and ask people for feedback. And so there were several stations with actual concept drawings like this, asking people, what did we, what did we include that they liked? What have we missed? And what do they think they could see for expanded programming? And that will all be included, and we also have on our website, we've been asking people for that kind of input. That's going back to the consultant. Consultant will put that into their entire proposal for the finalization of the report, and then we'll get it back. So when we get it back, obviously, I'm going to share it with the board, but I don't have that in hand. But this was one of the opportunities to begin that dialogue. So there'll be a lot more discussion as we go forward about, you know, what it is that we may want to present in the future and what their final recommendations will be for facility concepts. And obviously, the costs are going to be very much important in that. But how do we line that with the type of expectation and programming that we'd like to see? So I appreciate the board's attention on that. I'll try to go through the rest of my report pretty expediently.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
To the town manager, could you just tell the community where on the town's website that they could find that information, submit their feedback if that's available at this time?
Well, I know we posted the actual thing, I believe, right on the front webpage. I can't remember, to tell you honestly, Robert. But I know we also, I had asked Kaylee from our production coordinator for cable to also provide that. I thought they did that on the social media page. But I could have sworn that, oh, it may also be at Shelley Lambert's for the O. C. C. there as well. But I don't have it right in front of me, so, but I would be more than happy to share that. And actually, after sharing it tonight, I'll make sure that we do it more prominently. It may have gotten lost with all of the advertising we've had. We've had a whole number of events that have been coming up, plus town meeting, plus election. So if it's there, it may have been done more closer to the twenty-eighth date.
Are you looking for the email to send it to? Okay.
Okay. So I will, I'll double-check on that and see what we can do. The next is just to let you all know that today we had a very successful auction. Am I, thanks, there, Justin's, okay. We had a very successful auction. And it was held up here, and we did two of three properties, just so that the town is aware. This has been an initiative that we had started management-wise to try to reduce the number of properties we have in town that have not been paying taxes or we have not been able to collect revenue from. And so at this point in time, today, we did sell one seventeen Main Street, which was formerly a contaminated gas station that had been cleaned up and had some regulations placed upon it by the D. E. P. But we did have somebody who was well aware of all of the circumstances and bought that. And then four forty-five Main Street, which is the parcel or the property up above, had a lot of interest in it and actually sold for a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So a total of two hundred and fifty thousand. But to put this in perspective, we had not been, prior to my coming here, really focused on this as a financial way to look at our status in terms of best practices. And so since I've hired our treasure collector, it has been a priority. And looking at all of the parcels, we changed our tax title attorney. Treasure collector sends out notification when people are late on their taxes right away, and our tax title process has been much more streamlined. The whole point here is to just bring revenue and bring taxes online that need to be paid. And I will say, though, in a year and a half, we have brought in, through three different auctions, one point two million dollars that did not exist here in our revenue stream. And I think that is an important thing. It's easy to talk about generating revenue, it's a different thing to actually make it happen. And I want to thank Jillian Patch, our treasure collector, the Zika's Group for working very hard in, you know, providing all of the external marketing for this and our legal counsel, tax title attorney, Peter Brown. Again, it was very successful, and I'm proud to see that having occurred today. So I wanted to let the board know that. And I think that the next item is to let people also know that we, yeah, okay, we skipped, I'm sorry. So the next one was just to let the board know that I was a participant in the Webster-Dudley Oxford Chamber of Commerce. They had an event where I was a guest speaker, along with two of my colleagues. And I think it was, it was very, it was well-attended, and we made some new contacts with some businesses in town who want to do more in partnering with the town, so I think that was really good. But just to let you know, I had focused on how to grow local business in Oxford. I know we have a lot of discussions oftentimes about how wonderful the beautification efforts are. So we decided to kind of focus, my team, on looking at what we plan to do to highlight that kind of communication with the business community. So we talked about how we're leveraging grants to support our growth in town. And I looked at all the different grants and talked about the major ones that relate to historic preservation, beautification, energy savings, best practices, and also some economic development ones, which we're just starting to bear the fruits of as we're putting out our feelers and actual grant applications. We talked about how we're using a whole branding strategy called Onward Oxford that isn't just about a newsletter. It's really about much more than that. It's about providing enhanced cable features on things that are important, including our businesses, whether it's ribbon cuttings or what new businesses are coming to town. There is a whole effort that we're going to be starting on two fronts in January. One is the brown bag, lunch bag business series, which the point here is to highlight and give people an opportunity to learn about our existing businesses by featuring them and getting them an opportunity to kind of explain what their business does and how the local community can support them. Also, to look at these whole seasonal community events that have been bringing people downtown based on our master plan and based on what we think is really important. So I think we talked about that, and I think that the business community that spoke to me afterwards thought that was really interesting. And of course, they loved the idea that we were trying to feature more business involvement. We talked about pilots and partnership. We talked about pop-up space opportunities that we're going to focus on. We talked about that at town meeting with this new purchase of eighty-two Charlton Street. We're talking about also launching a storefront improvements micro grant program. I'm going to be working closely with Tony Sousa, and we are going to be looking at how to offer our business community resources, actual funds, to make changes that they've long desired, to give them better curb appeal or better, you know, communication with the public of where they are and what they offer. And I will be talking to the board about how we're going to be doing that as it gets closer to having developed the application form and how we're going to execute some of that, and where we're going to identify some funding to do that. Buy local campaigns. Tonight, you approved a one-day pouring license for a basically new farm in town. And buying local campaigns are something that is not just about farms, but it's also about retail, and it's also about food eateries as well. And Tony Sousa and I have talked about creating a small business passport program that has allowed other communities to feature some of their businesses. Just so that people know, we did provide a lot of handholding as best as possible through the pandemic. And this is our way of now trying to finally have resources, time, and hopefully not the distraction of a pandemic, to really continue the work that we had already started in earnest. We talked about some of the zoning changes that is really important to the community. Just to remind people, we've done over nine changes in the past two years. We've, you know, expanded our village business district, we've done cluster development, we've done, you know, changing and expanding our general business in Route Twenty. We've done hotel siting, which, by the way, was very interesting, hi, was very interesting to hear that, I guess Nichols College has been talking about building a hotel. And it's become quite competitive between the towns of Dudley and Webster. And they both spoke before me, and I said, oh, well, we, I said, I guess we're going to have to throw ourselves in the mix because we actually created opportunity now in our zoning bylaws for a potential hotel. And it was a little bit of a funny thing where we all said we were going to get in line from one another to talk to the president about that. So we'll see which town maybe perhaps gets that, but we'll have to maybe explore that. And of course, Brownfield's assessment, technical assistance, site readiness, those are all things that we have been doing. And some of the businesses that were especially commercial, light industrial, know that. So we just also shared a number of new businesses that have come, whether it's TC Controls, Chase Corporation is also dealing with us right now, talking about expanding their footprint. We're walking them right now through a state process where they had gotten grant money and during the pandemic, the, one of their grant requirements is the number of additional new jobs, and they fell short by a couple, I think, six jobs that they were going to provide. But also, it was in their calculation, they welcomed our support and ability to act as one of their advocates, and those are the kinds of things that we do. So I just wanted you to know that it's not just about talking to the community here, it's also talking to the business community. And I think we've been very effective to do that. I look forward to being able to partner more with different businesses, as well as our counterparts to the South, in hopes that we can do some other regional work together. We've already done the public land auction, which was taken off of the, out of turn. And so once again, my office has been contacted about the Oxford bulk item drop-off. Get ready, it's coming. October twenty-ninth, Saturday, you know, again, from eight in the morning to three in the afternoon at the transfer station. Anybody living in the center of town to the north of Oxford, that is your day to go. Please no mattresses and box rings, that's off limits this time around. Or is it November first? Does the first wave get to do it or no?
Nobody.
Nobody does?
It's effective, past the end of November first.
Okay. We're just cutting it off altogether, okay. We're just cutting it off altogether, okay. And then November 5th is for anybody living in the center of town all the way to the south. Again, there's a whole list on the DPW website of what we actually allow, but this is very unique and not many communities have bulk drop-off days twice a year. So, thanks to Cassella and DPW staff, which are there all day on a Saturday to help show residents where to go and how to be of assistance to remove items from their car. Next one is just to let everybody know that we had a great Public Safety Day and it was our first inaugural one. There was a lot of planning that went into this. I thought we would show the little clip that our cable series put together, it's just two minutes, but it gives you an idea if you weren't able to stop by, you know, to be able to come and see that event and if I can have you just put that on, that would be terrific.
We're glad to have this Public Safety Day today, to give the people of Oxford an opportunity to come out, meet this public safety personnel and hopefully inspire some people, especially the younger people walking around today that maybe want to go into public service someday. We're glad to see people come out today and hopefully this will be an inaugural event and we can move forward every year.
My name is Shannon, I'm here with Massachusetts Vestadog. We're an all nonprofit, all volunteer, 501(c)(3) and we provide bulletproof vests and essential equipment for police dogs here in Massachusetts. All the merchandise that you see here is up for sale for donations and all of the money goes right back into our organization to help police dogs in the state.
We're here today at our Public Safety Day, kicking off Fire Prevention Week. The theme this year is make sure you know your escape routes throughout your house and where your meeting place is.
I'm Nicole Giles, the project manager over at Hodges Village. Today, we're here on the Public Safety Day with our 17-foot Boston Whaler and a bunch of life jackets. We're teaching kids how to put life jackets on and how to vote safely.
Hi, I'm here today from District Attorney Early's Office with some safety information, prevention, education information. We do a lot of talks with students about bullying and cyber safety. We do adult events as well, like identity theft and fraud, so just handing out some parent information, student information to stay safe.
Hey everyone, my name is Robert Cross, I am the pastor of Connections Church here in Oxford. And so what we do is, we do this amazing stuff. Our church went and bought that police cruiser inflatable for the kids and we got an obstacle course and a soccer dartboard and, you know, we just want to be out here in the community, supporting our community. And so we just love this idea, today is the Public Safety Day and so we're excited to be a part of this.
I'm Lois Lewick, I'm the Medical Reserve Corps Coordinator for the Worcester Regional Area. Basically, we just work to support local public health as much as possible, as well as local emergency management and as many other organizations within our communities as possible.
I'm here today at Public Safety Day. We have some great goodie bags that we've been handing out with some information about different events we have going around town.
Hi, this is DPW Director Jared Duval, we're here at the inaugural Oxford's Public Safety Day. Very excited for this event, I think it's great to raise awareness as to what Public Works has to offer and look forward to this event for years to come.
I don't know, did you go to that?
I was.
Oh, it was, it was. So, we're looking forward to that. I just want to give a big shout-out to our police department, our fire department and EMS, as well as our Public Works and our Board of Health. You know, obviously, it requires a lot of communication and trying to get everybody together on a Saturday, even whether it's from the District Attorney's Office or any other state agencies, not always an easy thing, so I really applaud them and I think we'll, you know, continue to have a great Public Safety Day going forward in the future, as well as educational information for kids and their families. The next is just to let you know that even though I announced this at town meeting, we've already had four people come in and buy it because of that announcement. This is all to benefit our Historical Commission and I know they're not always here, but this is the Oxford History Memory Book that was published in 1988, it's a beautiful hard copy, I forgot to bring my copy up here tonight. And while the supplies last, you can get it actually into our treasure collectors, I know if you hit that one more time, it'll show you that it's $17.95, I know what happens, which is great. So, there are a few more, this is the last time I'm going to mention it, so get it while you can and learn from your past for the future. And speaking of future events, we have our Third Annual Scarecrows on the Common Event this coming Saturday, October 22nd, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Jocelyn Park. We hope, and maybe the scouts could actually do an entry, I know we're going to be trying to put one in for the town hall, maybe the Board of Selectmen, it could be a way to all partner together, that it's a really great event, there is a fair associated with that, with vendors. It's not too late to register, it's not too late to bring your crow down and put them on the Common and it's a great way to bring people all downtown, we look forward to that and some, you'll see some businesses already starting to put their scarecrows out as well. And then, just that our community center is really ramping up a lot of events which have not actually existed in the past, one's called Bubble Bubble Toil and Trouble, October 20th at nine o'clock in the morning, or it's Friday, October 21st at 1:00 p.m. It is something that you have to register for, but again, you can go online to OxfordMassMyRec.com. And there's also a Halloween preschool age yoga that's going to unleash the wonders of zen for your little monsters, that, I think it's so cute the way they said that, I didn't come up with that, they did. Thursday, October 27th or Friday, October 28th, both the same 9:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m., you register online, it's just 10 bucks a class, it's great, kids are enjoying them and that's what our community center's here. Once again, to the members of the board, thank you for your attention for the longer report, but I just wanted to be able to get that information out to you. And that would conclude my report to the board.
Thank you very much, Jen, very informative. At this time, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
A vote yes. Meeting adjourned.